Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, August 15th, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square in lovely downtown Salem, Oregon. And we will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have, first item's public comment. We have no one signed up for public comment. Invite anyone listening if you'd like to come down at nine o'clock on Wednesday mornings. We are, we have that open time for people to speak and say what they want to tell the commissioners. So, we'll move into our presentation. This is very exciting. We have a number of people here from Chomeka to Community College to make a presentation. And Commissioner Cameron, it looks like your name is taking the lead on this, and Tom Hoag. So, who wants, Tom, you want to come up?
Yeah. We want to do it together, Tom.
You want to come up over here, Tom? You want to go down or you want to stay up?
I'll stay up here.
Okay.
That's fine.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Tom Hoag from the Community Services Department. One of the fun things we get to do with lottery funds is, is work with good partners and good projects. And today, we're, we're sort of presenting and celebrating one of those projects. Chomeka to Community College is starting a diesel mechanic program in Brooks. And with our economic development lottery funds, we're helping them equip that facility. And we're giving them a check today. And we've, we've got a number of people from Chomeka to here to, to receive the award. And I invite the Commissioners and the guests from Chomeka to stand up to the dais. And we'll take your picture and hand you the check, at least a symbolic check, and go from there.
Well, Tom, would you introduce them before you just say?
Oh, I certainly will.
Please, thank you.
Yep. So, today, we have from the Board of Chomeka, Neva Hutchinson, just kind of raise your hand, and Ken Hector, as well as the President Julie Huckenstein and Holly Nelson. Very good.
All right. You don't want to say anything, Commissioner? No?
We've got a handheld mic here as well.
I made afterwards.
All right, then we're going to need a microphone. Okay, great.
So, you announced your time. Make sure you can see where it's talking.
Make sure you can see where it's talking.
You're just taking a picture of the check for yourself.
Wow, this is a nice chest.
All right, you're first. How about three? One, two.
Three, four.
One, two.
This will be a nice little start for this.
So, is this hot? Just a moment at the bottom, maybe. Check, check, check. Maybe I'll just go back there and talk on my.
Yeah, why don't we go back?
Yeah. There you go. Sure. Don't think it was. No. The light was on, but there was something going on. Probably they didn't have it on in the back. So, a lot of, a lot of folks know that we, we have Oregon Lottery dollars for economic development. And one of the things that we have done with those is we, as Commissioners, we've invested those in communities where we've helped communities do projects that they've had matching dollars with to, for example, Mount Angel. They've done some great things with their infrastructure up in Mill City with their infrastructure. We've done business development grants. And this is one that, this hundred thousand dollars is going to go towards education. But it's the, it's again, it's like the CTE type education that is really, really important for us in our, our region. And we have one of the, the largest trucking companies right across the street from where this is going to be, right across from the freeway, May Trucking. And I'm sure there's some other partners that, I don't know if they've been disclosed yet, who those private partners are that are going to help with this project. But this will be a really important asset for our region in helping to train people for diesel mechanics. And I know we've looked at different places, and we're honored to have it in Marion County and in the Brooks area. And that, the great things that Chomeka has been doing, as long as, in addition to this, with the partnership that we're working on with the OSU Extension Service District, potentially locating there with them. And so, we're just really honored that you're here today and that we could use some of our lottery dollars to help with this particular project. And I know it's going to take a lot more than the hundred thousand dollars that we just gave you today, but every little bit helps. And we're, we're glad that you're here to accept that. And thank you for your service to our community. Really appreciate it.
So, Julie, do you or any of your colleagues want to come and add anything to the conversation? Sure, yeah.
Well, thank you for having me. For the record, Julie Huckenstein, President of Chomeka to Community College. And I wanted to say how much we appreciate, and on behalf of the Board of Education, how much we appreciate and our students appreciate the investment that the Marion County Commissioners have put into our diesel mechanics program. I know these, the students that, that graduate from this program will have high-paying jobs, which will add to the economy here in Marion County and actually throughout Oregon. We know that employers really need these types of jobs right now, since transportation is one of the priorities of our state and of our local region. And again, we just really want to thank you and look forward to having you out to our facility when it opens. And look forward to just providing, providing those jobs here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. You mentioned when it opens, I can't find, is there a target? I certainly want to come, so.
Yes, well, what we will do is as soon as we have that, those dates lined out, we will let you know. We've had a few setbacks off and on, primarily some of it's because of the time of the year it is right now. So, we were hoping to have it start in winter term, but we're just not quite sure that that will be possible with some of the logistics around the property.
Okay. We'll watch for it.
And just, thank you, Julie, for all your partnerships that we have with Chomeka. And, you know, I think of the SOAR program and, you know, just, it, it goes from helping people change their lives around with SOAR to even some of those people that go through the SOAR program who potentially go on and do this type of a program and turn their whole life and their families around. So, Chomeka is just a great partner in the things that are happening in this community. And we just really, really appreciate your leadership. And we're going to miss you after you retire, by the way, too.
Well, thank you. And we, you know, back at you about that, because we have really appreciated the partnership that, the really strong, I would say partnership that we felt that we've had with Marion County. I, as you know, I've been President for four years now, and I'm in my fifth year. And one of the things that I've appreciated the most about that is being able to learn more about what the Marion County Commissioners do and how much you really care about this community in all of the county, from, you know, Clip to the Canyon to down here in the Salem area as well. So, I appreciate your service.
Thank you, and we appreciate you also being on the Public, on the Reentry Council.
Yes.
And Julie comes to every single Public Safety Council meeting. She's always there, so.
So.
We really, really appreciate that, too.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Tammy, do you, no, we're good? All right. All right, thank you. Well, that was fun. Now, on to our consent calendar. And Kevin Cameron, you're.
Is that my, is that my name this morning?
You're the Anointed One, yes.
Tom, thanks for putting that together. All right, so, under Business Services, Madam Chair, I'll move that Consent Calendar and Business Services approve an order appointing Alicia Weathers as a Voting Management Representative to the Health Insurance Study Committee. Under Public Works, receive a notice of hearings officer's decision approving conditional use CU case number eighteen dash zero two one, Kerry Solar Clerks, Kerry Solar LLC, Clerk's File Number five seven five four. Under Public Works, receive notice of hearings officer's decision approving conditional use case number eighteen dash two zero two two slash Sula Solar twenty-two LLC on property owned by Erin and Jessica Manguci.
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 He was a tough rascal, be careful.
Manguci. They're not here, are they? Probably going to watch that and come after me. Clerk's File Number five seven five five. And under Public Works, receive a notice of hearings officer's decision denying variance V case eighteen dash zero zero two Shaber. Under Treasurer's Office, approve an order distributing Oregon State Forestry timber revenue as per ORS Chapter five thirty.
Second to motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
For the record, which one was it? Oh, the solar thing, he said it's case number eighteen zero two one, not two two.
The second one's two two.
Right, but the first one's two one.
Thank you.
Okay. And the first one's in, looked it up, Sublimity, the second one's in Silverton. So, we've got a couple more, no more than twelve acre solar farms under our prior rules. And we'll see how the new rules go. So, any further discussion on the consent agenda? A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, those items are approved. Two action items today, no public hearings, so under Health, both of them under Health. The first one is to consider approval of the contract for services with Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency for a hundred nine thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars to provide a peer support specialist to support Mental Health and Veterans Court participants through June thirtieth, 2019. Sydney Nester is our presenter on this item. Good morning.
Oh, goodness. Hi, good morning, Sydney Nester.
I do that, too.
Marion County Health and Human Services, I'm a Human Services Division Director, here to bring forward this request to accept these funds to provide peer services at Mental Health and, and Veterans Court. So, Community Action is a recipient of Oregon Department of Justice Grants, and they act as the fiscal entity and then have passed the money through to us or would like to pass the money through to us to provide peer support. So, we have a one full-time FTE peer support divided between Mental Health Court and Veterans Court. Her role in Mental Health Court is primarily to provide individual peer support to individuals who are participating in Mental Health Court and to sit on the treatment team for Mental Health Court to ensure that that voice of recovery and the individual's choices and, and interests are represented to the team. In Veterans Court, she's doing a very similar function. And additionally, she's providing support and mentoring to a group of volunteer mentors that support the veterans. So, Veterans Court has an interesting model of volunteers who do a lot of the walking alongside the individuals who are in Veterans Court. So, the peer supports role with Veterans Court additionally is to support the mentors and make sure that they're aware of community resources that may be available for individuals participating in Veterans Court.
Very good. Questions?
It's not important, but I'm a little, is this a new position or you're talking like it's already ongoing?
Well, it's, it was a new position. They requested, the court requested, the judges requested this work from us. It took a long time to work through the contract language to hire an individual and to get someone started and get through the training.
And that's happened?
That, the training and the beginning of the work has happened.
Good.
And just for clarification, it's for both the Veterans Court and Mental Health Court?
Yes. One person splitting her time between the two courts.
Right, and then just to clarify, too, so the money comes from the Criminal Justice Commission grant, which is for specialty courts.
Yes.
Community Actions managing those grants. Then they're taking part of that grant, paying us to provide the peer support.
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
Got it, okay.
How will we ever keep that clear? Bruce will know.
Well, I think it's, it's a really important role. And I think that the more that we look into mental health interventions, the more peers are becoming really, it used to be kind of a out there, sort of new and different thing. And now, it's become, become part of the mainstream in terms of what people are thinking is needed, so.
I thought it was really great that the judges precipitated the request.
Yeah.
For the support and have been very excited to have a peer added to their treatment teams.
Very good.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't think we'll have any problem having Cindy keep track of all this. She's very good at it.
Thank you.
I appreciate what she does.
So, Madam Chair, if I could, I would make a motion that we do approve the contract for services with Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency for a hundred nine thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars, providing peer support specialists to support Mental Health and Veterans Court participants through June thirtieth, 2019.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that's approved.
Thank you very much.
And we have our second and last item, Scott Richards. This is to consider approval of Amendment Number Two to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network for the county to receive two hundred ten thousand five hundred two dollars and seventy-three cents in disbursement funds from the disbandment of the Mid Willamette Acute Care Region to which the county provided funding. So, we not only have Scott Richards, but we also have Ann Marie Banfield. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. I thought I'd start by giving a little background about the end of the acute care region. And then, Ann Marie will provide a little bit of information about what it's going to look like going forward. So, and just for terminology clarification, acute care region really refers to inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations. And in particular, the acute care region was formed to provide a service for individuals that are uninsured. And so, this dates back well before my time at the county in 2005, and probably, I'm guessing, close to the start of the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network as the managed mental health care organization. The state required that there be regional acute care entities. And our region was comprised of the five members of the BCN plus two additional counties. So, it was Marion, Pope, Yamhill, Lynn, Benton, Lincoln, and Tillmook. So, seven counties all received funds from what's now the Oregon Health Authority to pay for hospitalization costs for those people that were uninsured. And I think that the thinking was is that if you pool those resources, particularly some of those very small counties, could end up with some really high hospitalization costs that they wouldn't be able to cover. And in actuality, I think the model worked quite well. Over the years, what we saw is that we did not spend all the money on hospitalizations. So, we were therefore able to reinvest some of that money into our diversion services and respite services, that sort of thing that Ann Marie manages through the Psychiatric Crisis Center. So, with the advent of the coordinated care organizations a few years ago, really, the Oregon Health Authority took a different direction and no longer required that there be acute care regions. So, the thinking being that ultimately, I think that other organizations or the counties could manage the hospitalization for individuals who were uninsured. And the expectation was that there'd be significantly fewer individuals with the expansion of the Oregon Health Plan that would need that funding. So, the decision was made by our acute care region to disband, gosh, over a year and a half ago, probably close to two years ago. And the process started at the end of 2016. And I think the first distribution came about six months later from the MVBCN of the reserves that they were holding for these seven members. So, we received one distribution of funds. And then, but they held back a bunch of money with the anticipation that there would be more hospital bills to pay. And as you know, when it comes time to settle up those bills, it can take a long time. So, really, another year or more has gone by since that initial distribution. And now, this is kind of the final payout to all the different counties involved in the acute care region that were the savings and were not expended on acute care services. We've received probably three distributions over the years of kind of surplus funds that we've been able to, I think, successfully reinvest in our crisis system and helping to divert people. So, I think Ann Marie can tell you a little bit about what we've done with those types of savings previously, kind of our thinking about how we might use the, the funds coming to us now. And kind of a final piece is that we now continue to simply directly receive a contract with the Oregon Health Authority. I think it's around four hundred and some odd thousand per biennium for, oh, actually, maybe four hundred thousand per year, to, to manage the indigent hospitalization expenses currently.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, we use these funds to maintain our crisis respite services, which are pretty unique in our state. We have access 24 hours a day to a bed if needed, crisis associates, which are bachelor's level staff who can provide skills training and support during a crisis. And we're able to do that in apartments that we rent, as well as in somebody's home or out in the community. We monitor medications, we provide transportation to emergency appointments, and this funding will assist us with that. Some of the things, some of the grants that we receive through the acute care region have gone away, so this money will replace that and ensure that we can continue to provide a robust system to really work with Marion County residents and make sure they're getting the best services in our community rather than having to go into a hospitalization.
Any questions?
Well, just, just to comment the fact that, so the regional approach didn't work as the legislature intended it to, but we're still doing well with our crisis center locally is what this summarizes.
Yeah, I, I think that's very true that, that we've been, the systems worked well for us, so.
Right, the way we had it.
Mm-hmm.
And still have it.
I would think that probably it benefited smaller Oregon counties that had fewer people that will probably, and are we still doing it with Pope County or are we just?
Yes.
Right, okay.
So, we have, through the.
Through the CCO.
Coordinated care, they, they continue to have access to all of our services. And then, we have a contract with them to provide those services for their indigent care as well. And we reconcile that, I believe, four times a year.
Right. Yeah, and then, the, probably the reason that Benton and Lincoln joined with Lynn is because they're all part of the Samaritan.
Same CCO, yeah.
Hospital region, so it wouldn't make sense to split them off into some other, other configuration. But, yeah, so I think we'll, we'll do just fine, right?
I'm not so worried about us now.
Right, yeah. Okay. Well, great history, thank you and for the overview. Any other questions?
So, Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve Amendment Number Two, yeah, approve Amendment Number Two to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network for the county to receive two hundred ten thousand five hundred two dollars and seventy-three cents in disbursement funds from the disbandment of the Mid Valley Acute Care Region to which the county provided funding.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, it was Health and Chomeka today. All right, so no.
Good combination.
Okay, so we have no further action items. As I mentioned earlier, we don't have any public hearings today. I'll go ahead and read our Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings where two or three Commissioners will be present. We're just completing our regular Wednesday board session here on August 15th at 12:30 today, Wednesday. Will be a jobs council meeting at the Willamette Workforce Partnership Boardroom, 626 High Street Northeast, Suite 305 in Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday at eight, we think we're having a City of Salem, Marion County breakfast meeting. I haven't heard anything about that.
I saw the mayor yesterday at the ribbon cutting, and he said he was planning on doing the 7:30 and then going to our meeting, so.
Okay, so we're going to keep both of them?
Yeah.
All right. And that's at the Sassy Onion, 1244 State Street in Salem. At 1:30 is our Marion County Public Safety Building ribbon cutting. So, that's going to be a very exciting event out at the new building on Omsville Highway Southeast in Salem. And I think the program starts, it starts right at 1:30. Calendar review will be Monday, August 20th at 8:30 in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square, followed by management update at nine, same place. On Tuesday, August 21st at 8:30 is the Northwest Forest Plan Monitoring Project interview in the Mount Angel Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. At 9:30 on Tuesday is a work session on the Chomeka to Center for Business and Industry. And that will be in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor. Then Wednesday, August 22nd, we will be back here in the Senator Hearing Room at nine o'clock for our regular Wednesday board session, followed at 11 by a meeting with Sponsors Inc. in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. So, summer is rapidly coming to an end, even though it's very hot and it still feels very much like summer.
Smoky.
But my son started, he went back to, teachers came back on Monday of this week, so, in Utah. Send the kids come back next Monday, so things are moving.
Smoky.
It is smoky. We're not done yet.
The whole world is burning up. I am? You ready to go?
We haven't adjourned the meeting yet.
Yeah, I have to sign some papers.
I wanted to talk a little bit.
Yeah, okay, I'm almost done, John.
All right. Anything else that we wanted to discuss?
Where's the rush that you're going to?
Uh, the hazelnut ribbon cutting, hazelnut.
I thought it was at noon.
The tour starts at 10:30.
Okay.
I'll be up there eventually.
Are you going to be there for the ribbon cutting?
I hope so.
Uh, there was, there was a, a great turnout yesterday at the Cornerstone Apartments.
Oh, good, you want that?
For that ribbon cutting, yes.
Excellent.
Sat next to our Senator Winters, Chief Justice Demunis, kind of ran the ceremonies. And you had, is it Maria Salazar Housing, the Director of Housing, State?
It is Salazar, but it's not Maria.
And then, Governor spoke and the Mayor spoke.
Margaret.
Margaret Salazar and the Governor spoke, and then Brian, I'm trying to think of his last name, from Mountain West.
Oh, Brian.
It's not White, it's Brian, Morgism.
Now that you, when you say other names, it just like bumps the real name right out of my.
Yeah, it was a really good turnout.
It's Brian Moore.
Brian Moore.
Thank you.
I had Morgan, yeah. That was a really good turnout. And then, nice tour of the Sheriff's new facility yesterday. We had a good turnout for that. And I think people, I, I was really impressed how it's turned out. I was in there during the construction and it's, what are we doing, ribbon cutting tomorrow?
Yeah, ribbon cutting tomorrow. They're tearing the roof up, they're replacing the roof on the transition center.
Right, they were pounding on nails while we were.
Evidently, they found some very interesting things when they pulled the roof off, so.
Really?
Yeah.
So, yeah, that was good. It was a good day yesterday.
I, just so you know, I might be late. I have a funeral down in Albany, and it's going to be tight if I'm not there.
Tomorrow.
I do want to be there, if possible. Just listened to the radio this morning, I was so happy to hear that, oh, I want to watch his face, Wilsonville, Clackamas County here are organizing opposition to the rural airport. They want to make the decisions for us.
Ah.
He's going to let it slide.
Surprise, surprise.
I, I'm, I'm working on it.
I see.
Right here.
Oh, right now?
I got an idea.
All right. Fine.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anything else? We good?
I just love it when other people tell us what we can and can't do, don't you?
Yep.
All right. All right.
Well, fortunately, the law's on our side right now.
Right, exactly. Right.
Okay. We'll see how long that lasts.
I'm good.
All right. Well, if there's no further business, we will adjourn.